Please rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In accordance with the provision of the Open Public Meeting Act, a public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, the Herald News, the Trends, the Record, the Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the county superintendent's office, Board of Terminates, and Cablevision of Warwick, and posted in the administration list, copies of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, town hall, township libraries, and all district schools. Mr. Francis T. Walco?
Mr. Bailey, Mr. Seidowitz.
Here.
Mr. Drew.
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Here.
Mrs. Fritz. Mr. Guarino.
Yeah.
Mr. Huber.
Here.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Here.
Dr. Adamon, your report?
Yes, good evening, everybody. Before I forget, we do have a not-so-small reminder of our Highlander marching band. This is our national championship trophy. As you can see, it's about 12 feet high. It clears the ceiling by about an inch and a half here, so at least we know how high the Westbrook Media Center ceilings are. This was one week after we were in the states, they advanced to the national championships in Allentown, PA, and they came home with the trophy. And the hardest part of the evening for us was finding out a way to get it home, so we opened the back of the bus up and brought it in and laid it on the center of the bus aisle. So, congratulations to Dr. McLaughlin, all the staff, and obviously all of our hard-working kids. The national championship started back in August, and they had band camp in the parking lot in 95-degree weather, in rain, in wind, and they're out there practicing every day as hard as any athletic team. So, congratulations to all of our students.
Good afternoon. Great job.
Did we read the open public meeting statement there?
Yes, we did. We must have missed that. Out of it, I did read it. Did anybody else not hear the open public meeting that? Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Just to update the board, year two of the Kins Affluency Program. This is a program that we use at the K-8 schools, not the high school. Parents can sign up. The deadline has already passed already. It's mostly in September, where they can sign their families up, they get a free digital thermometer, and they can also download the app, so they can use this to record illnesses. Everything is confidential, but this helps parents if they get a buzz on their app, they'll know that the stomach bug is going through aptitude now in 4th grade, or there is another, strep is going through PK in 1st grade, so they're able to look at this information. We have, as of today, 787 families already enrolled. That's families, not students, so you're looking at well over 1,000 students who are now hooked up with our program here. So, we're very happy with that. Again, no cost to parents. We hope to increase that number for next year, year three. And the monthly progress towards district goals, I want to focus on math, Dan and Mrs. West are here to focus on language arts in just a moment, just to give the board an update on two programs that we're running this year that are fairly new. We've discussed it in committee in the past, and we've even discussed it at board meetings, but I'll try to give you a little bit more detail now. So, in math, we have a pilot program in 5th, 6th grade for enriched math classes. It's at three district schools this year, aptuate, Westbrook, and Upper Greenwood Lake. We're going to assess the success of this program at the end of the year and make a determination in the spring whether we roll this out to all six schools and continue with this or not. So, the goal ultimately is to increase the rigor in math at Macapin School, potentially leading to the creation of an algebra class for 7th graders. Presently, right now, it's offered to 8th graders only, so this could potentially open up the possibilities of opening up or creating a 7th-grade algebra course for some of our more gifted math students, which would, of course, open up the following year, an 8th-grade class in geometry, which would be the next math course in sequence. So, this would more or less bring us up to speed with our competitor schools and competitor districts, not just in the region, but across the state. So, we just started with this about a month ago, and we're looking to keep a close eye at this to see how successful we are there. And the second thing at the younger grades is called our new, it's a new program here called Math Facts in a Flash. This is at the kindergarten through 3rd grade level. This is through the Renaissance software company that we've used, that we also used last year. The math facts really helps our students achieve automaticity, which is the ability to recall facts instantly and accurately. So, those are your core math functions: add, subtract, multiply, divide. And studies have proven that students who leave 3rd grade with those four skills down pat go to much higher levels of math in middle and high school. So, it's sort of like a digital flashcard, so to speak, but it's a little bit more of a progressive approach. So, we're very excited about those two new programs this year, and again, we'll brief the board in the spring about the success of those at a later date. Next up, Ms. Murphy?
Okay, so I have a pretty big list of things that have happened and have happened. The first thing I'm going to point out is, again, the band winning the 2018 U.S. Band 5A National Championship. It's a big deal, we should point it out more than once. I had it around November 3rd. November 5th, the high school had its annual career day, and there was over 40 presentations on different career paths available to students. November 10th, we had the 19th Annual Military Tattoo, in which several different pipes and drums bands performed. November 12th, this last night, was the National Honor Society induction. Yesterday, during the school day, the Heroes and Cool Kids also kicked off their program, where our high school students visited the elementary schools, and they particularly mentored the 5th graders. Currently, the Interact Pub is hosting a food drive at the high school, and we're expecting donations of food to bring to local food pantries. Coming up, winter sports are on their way. We'll be kicking off the new year with a new hockey team, in which we're combining with the Klonic. Parent-teacher conferences will be coming up next week. And then, November 21st, we have a district-wide Word of Jeans Day, and we're going to be collecting money for Reads Across America, which two high school students, Evan Lemay and Matt Hoffman, are running. They're trying to get as much money as they can to lay Reads Across Us, don't forget, on November 3rd. So, that's all you got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Novak, you have a presentation?
Yep. We're going to start with a presentation in a moment. Just have a couple of quick announcements before we do that. And to reiterate, one of the things that Ms. Murphy explained is that we do have our parent-teacher conferences scheduled for next week. Our first marking period ended on November 7th. Our teachers are in the process of finalizing report cards and end of quarter grades, and we anticipate, you know, being able to share those with our families Monday and Tuesday of next week, where a parent can come to the conferences and sit and talk about their students' progress. You can expect a long-winded and lengthy honeywell from me before the end of this week to advertise our parent-teacher conferences and also our celebration this week of American Education Week. We're going to be opening our doors for Parent Visitation Day, which is going to take place in all of our elementary schools on Friday, and at the Macapin School and High School on Thursday. So, just a few things to be prepared for. Also, I want to announce, I mentioned it at a previous meeting, but we are in the process of advertising, and this is the flyer that'll be going home to parents soon, for our second annual Safe Night. It's going to take place on December 4th, and the event will span the time of 5:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. The program really begins at 6:00. The period between 5:00 and 6:00, we have a time for families to arrive, register and get checked in, and visit with vendors and local recreation theater groups. You know, the point of this evening, and if we, just to recall, I keep using Safe Night acronym, we call safe based on substance awareness and family empowerment night. So, it is a tremendous event. We brought in close to 450 families, parents and students combined last year, and that's just for the targeted group of 5th through 8th grade. Tremendous event. We offer a family-style dinner, where parents will sit with their children and be engaged in discussion activities. That'll be led by our Heroes and Cool Kids, so we'll have our, last year at this time, we were just introducing that group as a new group. This year, they're trained, and they're already in our classrooms working with our 5th and 6th graders, so the students who attend that night will know who our high school Heroes and Cool Kids are, so we're looking forward to that being like a little upgrade from last year's event. We also had the opportunity to bring back last year's speaker. We had Mr. Matt Bellis last year, who presented the topic of natural high, which focused on things that children can do and focus on to keep them on a less risky and less dangerous path, and we had tremendous feedback in regard to that speaker. He's coming back for a follow-up, where he's talking about resiliency and overcoming some personal demons, you know, at an age-appropriate sort of presentation. So, we're excited to bring him back. And again, December 4th, we're going to be advertising and really getting out the invitations and the permission slips during our Parent Visitation Day Friday, and then during our parent-teacher conferences next week. So, again, expect a lengthy email, maybe not as long as my explanation that I just gave you now, but that'll be, or honeywell, I should say, not email. Now, shifting gears, tonight we are going to highlight our language arts program, K-12. We have Mrs. Sharon West here to present on all of the great things that we're doing in language arts across the district. Each meeting, you approve things like professional development, our Readers and Writers Workshop trainer. You sign the bills list when we're buying furniture. Often, I give a brief description, but tonight, we're going to be able to expand on and really give you a little inside glimpse at what that looks like and how it plays out in all of our buildings. Again, this is K-12. You can anticipate, again, this is my long-winded portion of the evening, but you can anticipate it a little bit longer. Director of Ed report for the next few months, as we're going to take content by content, starting now this month with language arts, and each month, we're going to highlight each of our contents and give you a full scope and a detailed look at the things we're doing in all of our classrooms. So, Mrs. West?
Good evening. I'm so pleased to be able to be here again to share with you all of the wonderful things that are going on, that our teachers and students are involved in, in English Language Arts, K-12. So, I'm calling this presentation Items From Our News Feeds. I use Twitter as a professional learning network, but also as an opportunity to share the things that students and teachers are doing and to support all the other programs and departments throughout the district, and there's a lot of wonderful things going on. If you follow Twitter, you'll see all those great things. I'll talk a bit about the elementary schools, Macapin Middle School, and West Milford High School. In our elementary schools, and you'll see my actual posts and posts of some of my colleagues, moving forward with Writers Workshop Professional Development, handwriting instruction in grades K-2, cursive instruction in grade 3, phonics instruction in grades K-2, and the Balanced Literacy Support Team in year 5. We're in years 2, 3, and 5 of many of our initiatives, and I call that a good opportunity to gain traction. When you're beginning initiatives, it's a lot of work, but as you are getting into years 2 through 5, you're really starting to see the fruits of all of our labor. I want to speak a moment about comprehensive and job-embedded professional development and why that matters. It's great to have people come in and do a workshop here and there, or have our teachers sent out somewhere for a day or two for PD, but when we have an opportunity for them to come into our own schools and our own classrooms and work directly with our teachers, it provides a unique opportunity and aligns with best practices of adult learning theory. It's providing in-the-moment modeling and feedback for our teachers with our own students. It offers individualized instruction for our teachers, and it provides a space for collaboration and articulation among schools and grades and teachers, and this is one of the large takeaways and the benefits that I hear teachers saying that they most appreciate about some of these PD opportunities. So, we have ongoing PD with Writers Workshop. Our focus this year is grades 2 and 6. We're in year 3, as I said, of a five-year initiative. We have seven grade levels trained to date. That's 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7. Grades 7 and 8 have been trained at Readers Workshop and are currently being trained in Writers Workshop. Grades 2 and 6 this year is our Writers Workshop focus, and we are taking a deeper dive into Readers and Writers Notebooks, and zooming in on guided reading at the lower grade levels at primary and strategy groups for upper elementary. Handwriting and why it matters. Functional eligibility of our program has been the goal. While we know students want to have very nice handwriting, and we all want to have very nice handwriting, our real goal for our students is to be able to have some handwriting that they can read and that others can read. Students take pride in the writing. I think many of us take pride in our handwriting, or you often hear people say that they, you know, they'll apologize for their handwriting, or I'm a left-hander myself, so I've often made that apology. But what's really important is that in this swipe-and-type type of communication that we do, and that certainly has its place when you're swiping your finger across glass or typing on keys, we're not getting that feedback, that hand-brain connection. And when a student holds a pen, or a pencil, or a crayon, and they feel that drag, they're getting that hand-brain connection, which leads to stronger and different neural pathways and long-term memory storage. And we have MRIs to support that research, and it's really meaningful for them, and it really helps them to engage in writing as thinking. That success with writing empowers them as writers. And of course, fine motor skill development is critical to their development overall. Handwriting in grades K-3, we're in year 3 of a three-year development and rollout. We are, we have two years of a feedback loop for efficacy, so we've enabled our teachers to provide feedback to the team that's developing the program and incorporate that feedback. Again, it's multisensory and multimodal. Other features of the program that make it stand out as something better than what we could have purchased off the shelf, we have simplified letter formations, we have movement and learning. This supports, again, long-term memory, it's a research-supported best practice, and it's fun. You see our students here in a kindergarten class, they're up, they're moving, they're singing, they're dancing. We know that movement is good for them in the day, and it helps them, again, to get those gross motor skills going, and it keeps them moving throughout the day, which we also know is just a best practice. We've also incorporated clear and age-appropriate paper and materials for them. Year 2 of 2 for cursive, our occupational therapists continue to support our teachers in the classrooms. We have articulation and feedback meetings to support that feedback loop, and our students are excited and very proud of their handwriting. I overwhelmingly heard from our grade 3 teachers that the students were just excited to be learning cursive. Sometimes they do it as something that they do after lunch, they get relaxed, they write, they enjoy it. You know, for some of them, it's almost like an art form. Many of us, you know, do calligraphy for that sort of thing, and it's really a nice opportunity for them to enjoy. K-2 phonics, also very exciting. We're already in year 2 of this initiative, and why phonics matters. Phonemic awareness and phonics are the foundations of literacy. When decoding can happen, we know comprehension can follow. Comprehension cannot happen without the decoding of our basic letters. Comprehension, as we know, leads to higher levels and volumes of reading, and higher volumes of reading lead to student success. So, this very basic, fundamental skill is something that supports everything that we do from kindergarten all the way up through our 12 graders. Phonics First is the program that we have selected. We did a very intense research process and a training process, and it was very simply. We developed criteria and did a needs assessment. We conducted research, and we visited other schools that were implementing other programs, so we made sure that it aligned with everything we knew about best practices and everything that we know that should be going on in a classroom. This is a nice picture of one of our students using the sand tray. Our result was that we got an Orton-Gillingham-aligned program, that is IMSLAC accredited, IDA accredited. These are both organizations that support multisensory learning and dyslexia. It's differentiated, of course, teacher-supported, and student-approved. In my travels around the district, I'm hearing that teachers are very pleased with the program, I'm hearing that the students are very pleased with the program, and that they're enjoying the fact that it is, again, multisensory, they can get their hands on it, there's paddles, there's fingers in the air, there's movement, there's jumping, there's tapping, there's pounding, there's all types of physical movement that makes it fun for them, not just a worksheet. So, we are in the process of a spring and fall training, and in the winter, the remainder of our teachers will be trained. We've got all of our interventionists, literacy specialists, resource teachers, all kindergarten grade 1 and 2 teachers have been trained, for a total of 77 people. Our Balanced Literacy Support Team, this is a brief description of what they do, I spoke about this last time I was here. I'm pleased to say that we're in grade, in year 5 of this particular initiative. The work of these teachers is they support their colleagues throughout the district. This is another example of job-embedded PD. Our most recent outcomes and the work that's been done by this team has been reviewing and tweaking our common writing assessments. This was an initiative that we worked on and implemented last year, and we're fine-tuning it this year. We're in a very good place with that. And our phonemic awareness material support could not have happened right here in this very room. Immediately after school ended, that team got to work and produced and organized and put together all the phonemic awareness materials to support the phonics program, so they could not have done it without them. Macapin Middle School, exciting things happening there as well. We are moving forward with Readers and Writers Workshop, year 3. Flexible seating and reading spaces, and much of this flexible seating and reading space has flowed from the Readers and Writers Workshop model to differentiated model, and it is, when you are not having a completely teacher-directed classroom, that changes the structure of the way the furniture and the organization of the classroom is as well. Technology infusion in SAMR, of course, and differentiated instruction. So, our highlights here, grade 8 is our focus this year for Writers Workshop PD, and grade 7, we're fine-tuning. They are meeting three times across the year with our presenter. We have an increased focus on daily independent reading, which you'll see happening in all the classrooms, at the beginning of each class period. These are some pictures of some of these new spaces and the smaller learning groups, students getting comfortable and really enjoying their independent reading time or collaborating and talking about their writing. So, here we have Mrs. Siegel also implementing Phonics First. This is the structures level of the program in developmental reading. She's incorporating all these parts of the program, and the additional piece for middle school students is a focus on root words. Macapin Middle School highlights also include same three parts. This is another student who is working out the syllabication of a word during the same lesson. New and exciting at West Milford High School. This is a picture of our showcase table for our high school literacy. Flexible seating in the English classroom, and apprenticeship and feedback from a community publication, two very exciting pieces for the high school. So, flexible seating in the English classroom, one of our teachers, Mrs. Lowry, was able to pilot a completely new and improved way of organizing classroom with her furniture. The picture that you see here is actually from Highlander Academy. Mrs. Miranda also has experimented with some flexible seating for her students. So, why flexible seating? Incorporating student choice is pretty critical to the enjoyment of the literacy experience for students, even at the high school level and maybe especially for our adolescents. We want to create an inviting learning environment for them. Something that's important is mirroring the world of work beyond life and in the classroom. We want the learning environment to resemble some of the work environments that they'll be in: conference tables, comfortable seating, Starbucks, conference room, working in small collaborative teams or pods. These are the types of real-world work that they will be doing, and when they are working in an environment that mirrors that, that also advances their comfortability and some of the choices that they have. It improves focus and functioning, and it also dignifies the adolescent in their developmental stage of being independent. They like having choices, and they like being able to choose their seats and choose the position in which they're sitting. This is a picture from Mrs. Scully's class. So, from Mrs. Lowry's class, out of the mouth of babes, this is some of their comments about their new furniture.
I really like the furniture because it creates a more relaxing place, and like that we can just like, it's really a vacation.
Do this, eh, huh? These tables really make this room far more spacious than it otherwise would be, and they're way more comfortable than those old, dreary desks.
Okay. Definitely flexible.
Very flexible.
Hi. I love having furniture in this classroom because it brings such a family-friendly environment.
I really like the tables, they're really comfortable, you know, chairs are better than the old desks over there. You know, it's really nice.
I like coming into a welcoming learning environment and feeling comfortable in class.
All right, moving right along. Finally, last but not least, our partnership with the West Milford Messenger. Mrs. Petrasillo's Journalism and Modern Media class has a unique opportunity to have Julie Cole, the managing editor of the Messenger, come into the classroom. She did this in April, and she was able to share information about reporting, writing, editing, and photo, careers in journalism, taking Q&amp;A from students. Students received feedback, but mostly praise, for their work on our award-winning publication, the Highland Echo, both a paper publication and a news site. Further, Ms. Cole offered opportunities for our students to serve as a youth intern, that will be something that's happening moving forward, contribute their articles to the West Milford Messenger. Here on the right, you see our very own editor-in-chief, Kayleen Rose Ozannick. She contributed an article in July of 2018. In the Messenger, it was also found in the Highland Echo. So, it really is an opportunity to expand their writing, not just to the internet, not just to the walls of the classroom, but to the community at large, which is a wonderful opportunity. And they get to also, moving forward, edit a section perhaps as they become more involved in that internship. So, again, wonderful opportunities that our students are having to showcase their writing and be a part of their community, and show them that writing really does make a difference. I thank you again for the opportunity to be able to share these wonderful things, and thank you for all you do as a board to support all of these wonderful initiatives that our students are engaged in, that our teachers are working hard with, and thank you again.
Thank you again, Mrs. West. It was an outstanding job. One thing I'd like to go back to in her presentation was the discussion of job-embedded sustained professional development. It's something that we have really dedicated ourselves to and have been committed to and following through on. All great districts that achieve more use that model of professional development. Right now, I'd like to branch from that and make a plea to the community, that's the millions of people at home watching around the world, that we need substitute teachers. And we have an ad coming out in the paper. In order to have job-embedded professional development, we have to have a substitute teacher, a good substitute teacher, in the classroom to cover that teacher who's gaining that level of training. So, in order for that to be successful, we've got to make sure we have those people. So, you can expect to see here in my lengthy honeywell that's coming this week, a push and invitation to have those people who are interested in substitute teaching apply to the West Milford Public Schools. We're going to be talking about it at our parent-visitation days and also having information available at parent-teacher conferences. So, to see and continue, excuse me, have these great things continue going forward, the substitute population growing would really help in that regard. So, again, expect to see that, you know, that invitation coming real soon. And that concludes the director of it.
Thank you, Mrs. West. I guess we're going on to the special reports. Mrs. Francis T.?
Yes, we have the minutes. It appears Mr. Seidowitz was going through the minutes on the website, and for some reason, he pointed out that the type, there was a typographical error. So, that's going to be the page correction for October 17. There's also the minutes from October 16, 2018, executive and workshop regular.
We need a motion, and a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain of October 17, that is, on the board.
I'll abstain.
Otherwise, I'm not, yes, on the other chip. If not, any other discussion? Okay, we move on to my report then. Mrs. Dwyer, myself, Mr. Seidowitz was there, and also Mr. Guarino attended workshop down in Atlanta City. It was very, it was a very rewarding few days. A little more intense and walking and meeting a lot of people. We came in contact, actually, that, believe it or not, there is another district out there that is a mirror image of ours, that had the same kind of funding cuts and almost the same. almost the same district as far as...
Yeah, and I think we are going to arrange to sit down with them and try to figure out what to do with them.
Yes, they are in Gloucester County, and they have the same problem with ratables. Very, very similar thing. They have the same cut as we did. So it was a very informative few days. We went to a number of different workshop studies, which were wonderful. And our own attorney, Matt, did a wonderful program on taking out trash, and it was very good. So it was, it was a very full few days. That ends my report. Can I add to your report? Sure. Okay. We attended, Mrs. Van Dyke and I, attended the veterans' presentation at Paranise and Old School, and I'd like to commend Mrs. Cullen for a wonderful job. She pulls this together every year. She has a loyalty to the veterans. Her father was a veteran, and she presented that. It was wonderful. And I'd also like to comment that the other schools that presented veterans' programs did a wonderful job. We weren't able to attend all of them, but they really did a good, good job. And Saturday night was tattooed. Phenomenal. The kids, the parents, the parents who worked so hard to pull this thing together really have to be commended and should be highlighted. Look at the trophy. You had to see these kids carrying this trophy out on the floor. I thought somebody was going to fall, literally. But they did a wonderful job, and the bands, the finale with Clifton High School, West Milford, the clatter band, just a wonderful, wonderful presentation. And I think we should be grateful that we have events like this happening in the district. And it was, for anybody who attended, they'll understand what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Thank you for that. That's okay.
And Linda, may I just say thank you to the board members that attended? Because I've been the last two years, and the seminars there are just such top, so top-notch. I'd really like to encourage any other board members that can manage it with their job and everything to make it next year. Because it's such a valuable time, you get so much out of it, and there's fantastic information to be obtained there that you don't get anywhere else.
And just networking with other board members, it's nice to hear that other people are having something, not that it's nice, but it's good to hear that other people are experiencing the same difficulties.
You're not alone.
And they come up with some solutions, and maybe they will fit, and it's great to share. So yes, I totally, I agree. I do encourage anyone next year if they can go, that they go. So I'm sorry, Mr. Drew.
Thank you so much. Brief comment. I'm glad they made it yellow and black, and they ought to just keep it yellow and black.
That's the size of the trophy. And we'll move on to public comment. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be first with five minutes for each speaker for a period of thirty minutes, and then time permitting, other public comment limited to five minutes per speaker will be allowed until the thirty-minute time period transpires. All members of the public speaking during public comment are asked to address the topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to give their full name, spell their last name, and provide their address. Speakers may not use the names of students during their public comment. Would anybody like to speak? Has anybody signed up?
No.
Seeing none, like to close public comments.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, just a couple of, two edits to the board agenda tonight. First, first one is on page 11. Personnel, Student Affairs, Resolution Number 23. We're going to delete one name and add two. The name that gets deleted or crossed out will be Dana Lambert. And the two names that are going to be added are Joanna Riley and Lisa Lyons. And the second correction is going to be on page 14. Budget and Finance, Resolution Number Four, should be pulled. We have a hand carry that is slightly different. So we can cross out number four, pull that from the agenda, and that'll be...
Hand carry, is that your...
The hand carry is going to be in green in front of you.
We should consider that after executive session, because the board needs to discuss that in executive session first.
So we're going to keep that separate. Okay. So we need a motion to accept the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as presented with the corrections.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mrs. Dwyer, Education. Okay, move to, move to approve items one through 12 and hand carry number 14.
Second.
Discussion?
Remind me what number four was. I know I was losing all the patients. Are you crying?
That is the parent company for our Phonics First program.
For what?
Phonics First.
You moved, you didn't move 13, right?
No.
No.
Any other discussion? Mr. Drew?
I have a similar question about number five. What is that?
Number five, that is the approval to purchase the component called Accelerated Math that works with our SLMAP program for right child students that are not in this school.
Did you, I'm sorry, you might ask Mr. Sidewitz. I believe we made some changes to the calendar. Was it in line with what?
Yes. The school calendar, that's number three, two school year calendars. The changes from last month, there are three professional development days, or really shortened days, that were originally delayed opening, professional development days for teachers, or delayed opening for students, full day for teachers. We're going to change those to be early dismissal for students, full day for teachers. So the PD, instead of being in the morning, it's going to be in the afternoon. So those are the changes made to both those calendars.
Any other discussion?
Did we, I'm sorry, did we need to do anything about passover, or did we just...
We left it the way it was because of the calendar itself, the days in the calendar. If we add another day, if we take another day out, we have to find another day. And that brings us to June 28.
Just, I'm sorry to be a pain. Does our policy allow, though, that the kids who are observing?
We get a list of religious holidays. I think I shared it with the board in an email that are approved from the state each year of religious holidays. So students can observe with no penalty, per se.
All right, and they don't have homework or something they got to make up?
They would get a chance to make it up moving forward. It wouldn't be excused, per se, but they would be making up the homework at a later date.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, roll call, Mrs. Francisco.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Sidewitz?
In order of three, yes to the remainder.
Mr. Drew? Mr., Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to Personnel. Mrs. O'Brien?
Okey-dokey, kids. I'd like to move items one through 29 under Personnel, Student Affairs.
Discussion?
I'm just going to ask if we can hold number five until after executive session.
Sure. Is that okay? Do we have to take a...
Second.
I believe the chair can just do that if she wants to.
I'm not the chair.
You are.
Oh, me, me.
Yeah.
I thought you meant the chair person. Now, I had to be emotional.
And then there was a second.
Yeah, so we do have to have that.
Not necessarily. Mrs. Francisco recommended the change to the agenda, and we just said, okay.
I'm sorry, what was that? What?
Typing correction.
No, she recommended that we move something after executive session, and we just did it.
No, that was a hand carry that we have to talk about.
We need a motion.
Okay, so did somebody already make any?
Motion and second.
Okay.
Discussion on the motion. The motion is to postpone this till after executive session. Just the one. Thank you. Any other discussion?
No.
Roll call, Mrs. Francisco.
Mr. Sidewitz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Okay, what are we voting on, please?
The motion to wait until after executive session on motion number five. I'm standing item five.
Abstain.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
No.
Motion failed. We have a no, we have an abstain, and two no's and an abstention.
It's a simple majority, though, for a postponed, non-full majority, so it passes.
Okay.
All right, let's go forward without number five. Any other discussion? Mrs. Fritz?
I just wanted to say sorry to hear about Pbar leaving us, but we wish you good luck. I've had a great time working with you on technology, so I'll put that up there.
I'll take you back on that.
Me too. I can't yell at you anymore. Got to find somebody else now.
Good luck in the future, Pbar.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, Mrs. Francisco, were you waving? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I wasn't especially demonstrative. I'll do jumping jacks if it really is important.
Well, that works for you, Pbar.
I'm wondering, just question. One of my children was a pretty good fencer, and we just had a combined fencing team, girls and boys. There were 30 students, one fencing instructor. Do they have different tournaments for boys and girls? All right, that answers that question.
They have different schedules. I know the tournaments have different schedules.
Okay. Couldn't do it with one. Thanks.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Francisco?
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Sidewitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
I'm happy about number five, so I'm going to abstain.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Will we visit number five after executive session?
Okay, Budget and Finance. Mr. Drew, would you like to do that, please?
Sure. Here with me, sir. I would like to move, oh, my pages are out. There we are. Sorry. I'll move items one through 11, please. Oh, except four, which is after it's recommended. So one, two, three, five to 11, or five to 10, 11 is a separate issue. Unsoced.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Huber?
Yeah, question for Barbara. I printed out the map, and I really don't know what I'm looking at on this. It really doesn't, it's not labeled. It doesn't say what building that is. It doesn't show any roads. Can you tell me what building that is and what's the front and the back so I can get oriented on where the easement is?
Well, there were photographs also.
The photographs were of trees, a road, and things that could have been anywhere in town.
So this is Macabon Road. See, Macabon Road?
The discussion, just because everybody's in the dark. Mr. Huber's asking a question about motion one on there that has to do with the easement for the Suez Water on our property. So that's what they're looking at.
This is Macabon Road.
Okay.
This is the roadway to get to that building. This is our property here, which is in the woods, the swamp. And this is the water building for the MUA. So that's not on our property. This is where the easement is, right here, where the roadway is. We don't use any of this. We can't get down that road because it's not our property.
All right, so this is really not near any of the schools or anywhere a student would be?
No, no.
Okay, that's what I need to know. Thank you.
And which is why we kind of sent the picture with the, there's a picture from our property looking at the building through the trees.
These are the pictures.
Right. So that's...
It's a road, trees, and power lines.
That's where the road, that's where the road is entering.
Of course, none of them were labeled, and it's explaining what they're supposed to be depicting.
That's the Mac Pro. This is the gate that goes up there. And this is the building from our property.
There's a building in there?
Back there. So if you go up...
Okay, so the vaguely white spot amongst the trees is a building.
Yeah, so if you go up the roadway toward McCormick Field, and you walk to the edge of the property and don't, don't fall down the hill, you can see the building.
All right, but long and the short is, it won't interfere with students?
No, because we don't have any access to any of that area.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, Mrs. Francisco, rock for our board.
Sure. Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Sidewitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Yes, I saw that. That's why I skipped over it.
This isn't Florida. You only get to vote once.
Yeah, that's why I skipped over it. And Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six...
I'd like to move item number 11.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Francisco?
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Sidewitz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Abstain.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
I'd like to move item number 12.
Second.
Discussion? If not, Mrs. Francisco?
Mr. Sidewitz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Abstain.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
I'd like to move item number 12.
Second.
Discussion? If not, Mrs. Francisco?
Mr. Sidewitz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
I'd like to move item number...
Wait. We didn't get to everybody.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes. I'm voting on 12 right now, right?
Yes. Transfer.
I'd like to move item number 13.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Francisco?
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Sidewitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Abstain. Mr. Guarino is not here tonight. Could you move that, Mr. Sidewitz?
I move item number one under policy.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Francisco?
Mr. Sidewitz?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Negotiations.
Yeah. I'd like to move item number one, please.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Francisco?
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Committee report. Mr. Corvino is not here tonight. Safety. We had a safety meeting on November 1st. A lot was discussed about the reverse 911 and the implementation of it. Shared 911, I'm sorry. And the implementation of it with the teachers, the logistics with some of the buildings that had to do with getting the signal to where they need to be. That's the disclaimer with the shared 911.
Yeah, I think we've noticed a little bit. This is an app that we purchased for this year for each staff member to use until they can place a school in a lockdown. You know, no longer the ability to call a lockdown. Used to just be in the main office with the principal. Now it's any staff member can do it from their laptop, their desktop, or their mobile phone, iPad, whatever. So.
There's different things that they were going over, like they have to come up with booklets and different things like that for the classrooms. So that was the bulk of the discussion. Superintendent's round, I'm sorry, Mr. Drew.
Since that, thank you. I appreciate that. Since the bond was approved, do we have to apply for grants to get money for safety initiatives? Or what's next for us with that?
We haven't gotten any information from the state at this point.
About the second quarter, the addition to the question that was on about.
Yeah. It was approved.
Yeah, but those two weeks ago, we don't have any addition. We have nothing since then.
I mean, it looks like maybe a good opportunity for us to ask.
Time will tell, right?
Mm-hmm.
Superintendent's round table.
The two biggest things that came out of the superintendent's round table had to do with the school calendar. Parents wanted the professional days moved to an early dismissal because of childcare problems in the morning. So that was addressed, and of course, the voting issue at PK came up. And we had a walkthrough by the county of the, is it the Philadelphia? Freedom Church. Freedom Church for November, January, January 13th? Why does that sound familiar? It's in January.
I have a date in mind.
Okay, okay. So those are the two biggest concerns. State County School Boards, the next meeting is November 29th. I'm not able to attend, so if someone is able to attend, please let me know and I could go in my place.
I'd be interested. I got to check my calendar.
Just contact me and let me know. New Jersey School Boards, it really falls in line with the report of the workshop because that's what was held. I gave my report on that legislative, Mr. Huber.
I did not find anything new.
I'm going to come to you. I know that you have a legislative too, right?
The delegate assembly.
Right, let Mr. Huber first and then.
Okay, well, I didn't find anything new as far as finalized legislation. I was going to announce the, you know, the passing of the $500,000, $500 million bond. But Mr. Drew already mentioned that, so that's all. That's all I've got today.
Stolze thunder, sorry. Well, the delegates' assembly?
So this Saturday, Senate President Sweeney was supposed to speak to the delegate assembly, but in his place, Mark Magyar is going to speak. He is the Associate Executive Director for Policy Development in the Senate Majority Office. That's a heck of a title. And the former New Jersey Education Commissioner Lucille Davy will be addressing the assembly. Anything that any member would like addressed, please email me. I'm a delegate on your behalf.
Anybody have any questions for Will? Technology, Mrs. Fritz?
No update right now.
Mr. Seidowitz, the township.
So in order to create a wider community discussion, I've talked to Mr. Signarino and asked if he'd be willing to meet with the Friends of Wallish. And so if, with the board's blessing, we can continue on speaking with the Friends of Wallish to discuss the following questions and anything that you may bring up. What are the expectations of the board, the council, and the Friends of Wallish? The current goals of Friends of Wallish, future goals of the Friends of Wallish? How can the board and council help the Friends of Wallish? And what other ideas they may place on the table? So I will be reaching out to everybody individually to hopefully garner some, any input and whether or not we should move forward with this. But I think it's valuable to discuss this property that we have in common with the council.
Mrs. Dwyer? I would be very interested to know how this Wallish property is going to benefit our kids. And that should be the number one priority. I have a question because I have read something and that the group was not, are they changing people or something?
You mean the Wallishes?
Yeah, the Friends of Wallish.
You mean that the board itself?
Yeah.
I mean, I have heard hearsay, but I'd rather not, I would rather not say.
Are you talking about the Friends of Wall, are you talking about Friends of Wallish right now?
Yeah, is there, is there?
Oh, Friends of Wallish. I don't know.
I believe that there was, I don't know about the question of whether the board's changing or anything, but I believe that in the past, the Friends of Wallish have discussed things like, you know, putting up greenhouses, doing agricultural things that you could bring students to, things like that. That would be, could be valuable for us as far as field trips and things like that. There's also, you know, there have been ideas brought up such as solar power, utilizing some of the land for sports or recreation of fields and things like that. So there's a lot of things that that property might be used for that because we are, we don't have the same requirements on us as the town has on it as far as using the properties because there are wetlands over there and wetland borderline, border properties, that with our cooperation, it might be used differently than if the council just had to try and do something themselves. So we need to, you know, try and cooperatively figure out something that this could be used to benefit everybody and especially our students. But it's possible to get some income out of it.
It would be purely an information thing that you're doing.
Absolutely. And also in regards to Mrs. Dwyer's comment, in how it will benefit kids, that has to come from our end, our administrative end, because that is our shared property with the township, so.
But you know, that expectation, that's why I brought that up.
But I believe the Friends of Wallish have ideas about that, so for us to listen to.
I think, I think as long as you're going about it purely of information, that's fine.
Absolutely. I'll report back to the board.
Not giving any promises.
I could tell you that this has been discussed a number of times over the last few years. So there have been some overtures too with the high school. I think with the environmental club and getting involved with them.
Would the administration be able to maybe give us an update on what we have utilized the property for? Thank you.
Thank you, Will. You'll let us know when you're ready.
Yep.
Mr. Drew?
Thank you. We have a member in the audience who's on the board of the Friends of Wallish, and I might recommend it, the person is willing to perhaps in the second of a coming period to get discussion.
That would be up to him.
But are we encouraging him?
If he would like to, that's up to him.
I, for one, would be interested.
Education Foundation, Mrs. O'Brien?
I received information from the current board of the Westmilkford Education Foundation that due to the lack of volunteers, the Ed Foundation is in the process of dissolving. I know that the years that I've been on the board, and I'll preface by saying I apologize, but I'm doing house renovations and my paperwork is somewhere. But I know that in their, I'm sorry, I'm having.
Bylaws?
Bylaws, thank you, thank you. Somebody is thanking for me. That there is stipulations as to how they're going to disperse the funds. That's what they're in the process of doing at this time. If things change, if they reinvent themselves or come back, I'll be happy to. You can give more information?
Yes. Maybe, maybe on the comment part also, please?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien.
No problem.
Awesome. Mr. Huber?
Okay, I haven't had a meeting since my last report, but I would like to give a second shout-out for Safe Night. I attended it last year. It was a really fantastic event. There were a lot of valuable vendors that were, that were there. For anybody who is looking for information, the presentation was good, and I can only imagine it'll be better this year, having practiced once before. So I encourage all families to try and attend that.
Mr. Grant. Old business? Does anybody have anything for us?
Seeing none, like to pose old business.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty. New business? Mr. Drew?
Thank you. We did something last year, around this time of year where we voted to recognize our teachers who have earned various levels of Teacher of the Year, recognized awards. And I would like to make a motion to do the same thing this year. The thinking on this is that we have actually quite a few, many outstanding teachers. But every time I talk to one of these people, it is, I'm just astounded by their enthusiasm. I can see why kids want to be in those classes. We had the district teacher of the year, of course, give a presentation of the song. We're just very, very lucky to have these people. I wish there was more that we could do to recognize our teachers, our teachers of the year. You and I had a discussion about this, Mrs. Van Dyke, and I think it's very worthwhile to see if we can figure out some additional things we could do in the upcoming year, maybe to recognize our teachers. We're just, we're very lucky to have these people. It's not really all that substantial, but just kind of a way of saying, thank you. You're doing the job you do. You change lives, and I think it's huge. The actual monetary amounts were, a school being designated a teacher of the year from the school, it's $500 if you win district teacher of the year. It's an additional $500 for $1,000 total. If you receive recognition as Passaic County Teacher of the Year, it is an additional $1,000 for $2,000 total. And if somebody were to be recognized as state teacher of the year, it would be an additional $2,000 for $4,000 total. And anyhow, I would like us to consider that again now for payment sometime in December, before the holidays. And, you know, I understand there are other people who are doing a bang-up job for us. I think the proof is in the pudding, but I believe we've had teacher, Passaic County Teacher of the Year nine out of the past 12 years. And we're just very, very blessed to have these people teaching our kids. And I think that deserves recognition.
Are you putting up a motion for that?
That was a motion, yes.
Second.
In those specific amounts for those specific regulations.
Do you have that written down?
Can you do a Reader's Digest version?
Yes. The people who won teacher of the year, there should be eight of them, one for each school, get an additional $500 payable sometime in December. If any of them go to the next level and win district teacher of the year, and I believe we have one of those, they get another $500, $1,000 total. I don't think we had Passaic County Teacher of the Year this year, is that right? So maybe it's not even worth discussing those levels, but so.
Anyone have any discussion?
I don't know.
I know that you reached out to me, say I couldn't get back to you. I apologize. I feel like this is, it's a bigger conversation because it's like, are we going to do this every year? And maybe with the conversation, is something that is better student for committee discussion? To decide first before, like, because it's not just, you know, each year we're going to, otherwise we're going to have a discussion. I'm not disagreeing or agreeing one way or the other. I just feel like it's a bigger conversation. Financially, you know, look forward.
And there's just also, it's a very flawed goal, and the board can choose to do it if one. I just have concerns potentially about the negotiations aspect of it and whether or not this would be something that would be more appropriate for that aspect. You certainly can make whatever motion you want, Mr. Drew, but it might.
Well, so it's your advocating for a position. Let me counter that I think it doesn't belong in negotiations because then you add it into the pot, and if you give it to one teacher, you're taking it away from another teacher. So that's very specifically why we didn't discuss it in negotiations.
Drew, I'm not trying to advocate for a new position.
Well, you're doing it.
No, I'm just saying that there might be some legal implications, that's all.
Is there, and Mr. Huber?
I think that, we discussed this pretty much at length last year. And, right, right. So there's a little bit of history, but I think what ended up being decided was that, one, the teachers deserve it, and two, it's a motivating factor that for a very little bit of money, in the overall scheme of our budget, it's worthwhile to have that motivation out there and to also say thank you to these particular teachers.
I'm going to vote no, and I, please, in no way do I want the staff.
Point of order?
Wait, I'm not voting yet.
No, it's point of inquiry. Aren't you conflicted? This is for teachers.
No, I'm not conflicted.
This is for teachers.
I can't vote on this?
This is not.
I don't know.
I have a voter who's a teacher.
No, just, I mean, if there was some aspect of it, like you'd have to.
And her daughter was not one of the recipients.
And I mean, again, this is why we're just asked, like, the mechanics of this. Is it just automatic that if you get this, we're giving it out in December? I don't even know, like, we have the, we have the ability to do this.
This motion is this year only. This is not a permanent.
Did your daughter, any family member, relative win so that?
Not this year, not this year, no. My comment's going to be that I will vote no on it, not because I have, this, please, in no way does this represent my feeling towards the staff of this district because I know what an amazing staff we have here, and I am very supportive of that then. I feel that it's a, I do agree with Mrs. Fritz, that this is a bigger issue that should be discussed in committee and get feeling from everybody. And to discuss it in public is a very difficult thing to do for each board member. I would love to do something for Dr. McLaughlin then because a national championship is a wonderful thing that he's brought to our district. But I think there are ways of letting our staff know that we, we recognize them without singling out a few and having many feel disenfranchised. So I'm going to, that's how, that's how I feel. That's my opinion. After the vote last year, I had been out with some people, and I would never give names, but they felt, they felt the, the people who were happy about it were the people who received the award. And the other teachers were a little not, I don't want to say, it just didn't sit well with them. And we even got a letter when we got on the board in January from a former teacher's husband, who was the teacher of the year. And it was, it was a very berated letter to us. So although I know and I do agree with you that we want to, we want to identify these teachers and thank them, I also do feel that we have to think about how we go about it. So I'm not for it. That's my own opinion. I don't know about anybody else.
I would only have to counter that a little bit by saying that I don't think that the everybody gets a trophy viewpoint works.
That's not what I was looking for, but thank you. Does anybody have any other comments? If not, we're voting on the motion, correct?
Yes.
Roll call, Mrs. Francisco.
Mrs. Sei, Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
No.
Mrs. Fritz?
No.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
No.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
No.
Mr. Seidowitz?
I move that the following statement be read before voting on all future HIB investigations upon its approval. The Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act. The Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act adopted by the New Jersey Department of Education in 2011 provides anti-discriminatory protections for students. The Act narrowly defines harassment, intimidation, and bullying, commonly referred to as HIB. Substantiated HIB cases must demonstrate any gesture, any written, verbal, or physical act, or any electronic communication, whether it be a single incident or a series of incidents that is reasonably perceived as being motivated either by any actual or perceived characteristics such as race, color, religion, ancestry, national origin, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity and expression, or a mental, physical, or sensory disability.
I knew I said off the top.
Or by any other distinguishing characteristic. Unsubstantiated HIB cases are determined by the board and the administration to lack these perceived characteristics. Therefore, the disciplinary actions in unsubstantiated cases will be applied in accordance with District Policy 5600, Pupil Discipline Code of Conduct.
What exactly did you want this to be for?
To be read.
You want this read every time you say it, for every single HIB?
Yes. But we're discussing before we're...
Not every single HIB, but every time we do a HIB motion, I believe is what he intends. Is that right, Will?
Yes, Mrs. O'Brien.
Point of order, there is no second.
Second.
Thank you. Now we can discuss.
Point of order. Now we can discuss. Madam Chairman, may I ask? Yes, you may. Do we legally have to do that?
No. I can answer that. Right, no, there's no requirement under HIB that says that we need to do this. I was just going to say as a point of information, I'm actually working with Barbara and Superintendent to put out just the two or three paragraphs on the website, just to explain the difference. There seems to be some misconception that if a HIB is unsubstantiated, everyone just walks away. There's no discipline. That's not the case. It still just goes into the student code of conduct. There's just a difference between conflict, which is generally like the classic, two people get into a fight. There was something said beforehand, no bullying. That is not HIB. Whereas with HIB, you have to meet very specific criteria according to our policy and the law. Again, I'm not making any, I'm not advocating for this motion one way or the other. Just saying, we're doing that on the website. If this is something that you guys want to do, you certainly can, or it is not required by the law.
Mr. Huber.
Okay. I'm in favor of it. I would ask if Will would be willing to amend his motion to add something. Simple statement that just basically says that the HIB law is an anti-discrimination law rather than a true anti-bullying law.
It does say anti-discrimination.
Oh, it does.
And a second number. Mr. Sidewitz.
So I prepared a statement. As the maker of the motion, kind of reserve the right to speak first anyhow. In my opinion, the board gets unfairly positioned by residents regarding HIBs. The board as a whole is discredited by being called supporters of bullying and not doing anything regarding bullying matters, and it's unreasonable to think that any one of us does support bullying. However, this situation brings to light an important gap between the board and the public. As we have spoken about in the past, the general public is unaware of the board's role in the process of determining HIBs as substantiated or unsubstantiated. Mr. Huber brought up in the past the reading of a statement prior to voting on HIBs that is similar in style to the OPMA statement. This, the statement seems a necessary start in combating the misinformation surrounding HIBs, especially to the students and parents that come to the board for further consideration. The reason why you have numbers in front of each of those lines is that way we can reference them in order to amend it. So if somebody does propose an amendment, they can make a quick reference. That way, we're all on board with their motion. I hope you support it.
What I would like to say is I do agree that we are being misunderstood because when we vote no, when we vote to unsubstantiate a HIB, it seems that we have done nothing, and I totally agree with that. We have had some discussions, Dr. Anamona and myself, talking about maybe there is a way to educate the parents on exactly what HIB means. I think across the state, people don't understand it, and it is a little confusing. And we thought that maybe coming up to the next school year, or, you know, to back-to-school night, or one of them would be an ideal way to get that information out to our parents and to people so that they understand exactly what you're saying, Mr. Huber, about it not being an anti-bullying law. We need to get that, we need to educate our parents, and we want people to understand that we also do, there is ramifications to things. They just may not see it because it doesn't fall under being substantiated HIB. So although I do agree with you, I do also think that we need to go that step further and educate our parents. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about this type of motion, you know, like this to be reported each month. Mrs. O'Brien?
The, the public, the parents, don't understand that when we go into executive session, we talk about the HIBs, and a lot of times we question the details as to what has, what kind of services were provided to those, to the children, the victims and the bullies. And in this, six years I've been on the board, there's never been a time where nothing was not done. Something was done. There was some sort of counseling. There's some sort of ramification when incidents have taken place. But the thing we also have to understand is that these are children, and their needs have to be protected. Their privacy has to be protected. So we don't go out there and we'll say, you know, so-and-so, this is what so-and-so, this is the punishment from so-and-so, and this other child went through this. So there's a strict policy as far as protecting the privacy of the children. So that's why nothing of this sort is being discussed in public, which gives the, in my opinion, gives the public and parents misunderstanding that nothing's being done because we can't go into any further discussion on the matter. So we have to, we tread lightly. We tread very carefully when it comes to that stuff. We do not want to mess things up that way.
The one thing that I would ask is, this is kind of off the cuff right here tonight for us. I...
I emailed this twice to members.
I never got it either.
I can show you the emails.
Yeah.
Nobody else got it.
Okay, okay. Well, I'll be honest, I did not read it. If I got it, I didn't read it. And I tend to read pretty much everything that I get, so maybe it came while I was away. I don't know. But anyhow, I would like to see it discussed just a little bit further in committee, but we can do whatever. Mr. Huber.
I'm just going to suggest that since we don't have anything in place at this time, that we maybe put this in place, and if later on our parents are sufficiently educated, this can be adjusted or removed at a later date. It's as easy to remove as it is to put in place, and I think for the time being, it's a good thing.
Mr. Drew?
My concern here, there's no question, there's confusion. It seems like the principal confusion is there are acts of bullying that do not cross the New Jersey state law to be bullying involving a protected class. And when there isn't that sort of protected class, it's not a HIB. It doesn't mean it wasn't bullying, but it's not a HIB. And people are completely confused about that, with good reason. I think it's actually bad law because it is so confusing.
It's misnamed.
My problem is, I like the idea of informing people at every meeting, except, what, we're going to tell 20 people over and over again? What the problem is, I think that whatever the final resolution is, it needs to be written down where people will see it. They can go to it. We'll have hundreds of people look at it instead of 20. So I guess my temptation is, although I don't know. Do we have any idea when that will be written down on the website?
I'm working with Matt now to get a statement out that we could share on our website. So we have a rough draft now. We're still working on it.
Because I kind of like the idea, okay, let's announce it, and when it's written down...
I think I have a broader reach than at this board meeting. Like you said, there's not that many people here.
Yes, there's not enough people.
We have the ability to put on our website that everybody goes to and honeywell it out, which will go to every parent then. So that might be, that might be the better way. Just a thought.
Is it likely you'll have that by, let's say, the next meeting?
Yeah, we have a draft now. We just have to fine-tune it a little bit.
Mrs. Fritz and Mrs. O'Brien. Mrs. Fritz first.
I agree with the concerns about, that there's a lot of confusion around it, and I don't think this is the right form for reading statements. I don't know that that's going to have a lot of value to the people that really have the questions. I mean, it's still legalese a little bit. It's a very formal paragraph. I think educating parents and getting more information around the process, kind of being a little more transparent about what happens and what constitutes which piece of it is what really is going to make a difference. And maybe even in addition to just a formal blurb on the website, maybe it's almost like it's FAQ, to the extent that we can share lenses around that, really to help, you know, those questions that you see parents asking over and over and over again, kind of putting something like that out there. I think educating people versus just reading a statement at every meeting, this isn't going to add a lot of value.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Food for thought. I don't like to add more work to everybody's caseload at the moment, but I'm wondering if the PT, if the school websites, I mean, not just our website, but all the schools and maybe PTA's, PTO websites, their sites, they should have something, maybe, doesn't have to be, you know, a carbon copy, but maybe something comparable, or even a link to something else to help them out as well. I mean...
So currently, through our parent portal, every parent in the district has access to our HIB policy, our code of conduct, through the parent questions on the parent portal. And we have a checkbox for those parent questions to make sure that they have looked at it, that they have seen it, and that it's still there. So that is always there and is always, always available. So it is something that we have access to everyone. And I guess we can discuss again, you know, how we bring broader exposure and knowledge to that.
All right. I must nod. I don't know. Through the parent portal, you got the parent portal through the main website, correct? Our website?
Yeah, so it's the, it's the resource that a parent would use to log in when they're checking in.
For parents, it says.
Parents, grades. That sort of thing.
Okay.
It's also an app now. We have an active Facebook.
Okay.
It's also an app on your phone.
All right. Forgive me because since my kids are not in school, I'm not that, you know, I'm familiar with my stuff.
If you have a registered student, you have access to the parent portal, and then you can, you can access all these documents. Without having to search through, you know, the policies sort of, you know, it's big when you go through the website. When you go to the parent portal, you click directly, and it takes you to those policies that we're discussing now.
Mr. Sidewitz, maybe we could, when you're done, vote a question.
Two things. This statement is intended for the parents that do show up for that HIB for their kid. This isn't a district-wide notification of what an HIB is.
Or watching at home.
In my opinion, or watching at home. Secondly, I move that we strike "Adopted by the New Jersey Department of Education in 2011" from that statement.
You can just amend your motion, and I'll second it.
Okay. I'll have to read it again.
No, you don't. No, you don't.
First of all, no, for the board, it would just be, you would make a motion to amend, there could be a second. There still needs to be a vote on it to amend. It doesn't just go in automatically, obviously. So there would have to occur. I don't know.
Can I call the question if...
For the board, there's a motion.
No, the bound president is allowed to call the question at any time. Very lengthy discussion.
Point of order. Point of order. Not discussion.
Yes, Mr. Huber.
Okay. Procedurally, Will can withdraw his motion, make the new motion with the adjustment, and it can be reseconded, and then we don't have to have a whole lot of extra voting.
What if I called the question if it's beyond that?
Point of order. My understanding of Robert's rules, you can call the question. But if there's any objection, then we have to vote on whether to close the question, not just you get to call it and we're all done with discussion.
Pursuant to Robert's rules in our policy, the board president can call a question after there's been a full, lengthy discussion.
Sure. Can you show me that policy, please?
Point of order.
Do you have a power call on me?
I can also, point of order, we can also object to the chair's decision, and then that could be second, absolutely.
Where does that come from?
Robert's rules.
Where does that come from? The 700-page book that has the rules that outline how we run a meeting.
Well, I'm calling the question, and we'll vote on it, and then we can move forward. Discussion has been exceeded here to about 25 minutes already. Mrs. Francisca, please take the vote.
We're voting on closing the question, or we're voting on...
On the original...
We're voting on his motion.
Original motion.
The original motion. Mr. Sidewitz.
Yes.
Mr. Drew.
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer.
No.
Mrs. Fritz.
No.
Mr. Huber.
All right. Just to clarify, a yes means you want to call the question and vote on it?
I'm not voting on calling the question. We're voting on the motion.
We're voting on the motion.
Yeah.
All right, so we're not voting on calling the question, even though there's objections. All right. So I'll say yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
No.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
No.
Motion fails.
Any other new business? If not, I need a motion to close new business.
See, I'd like to close new business.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Have your meeting afterwards, Mr. Huber and Mr. Drew. Time for public comment. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be pressed for five minutes for each speaker for a period of 30 minutes, and then, time permitting, other public comment, limited to five minutes per speaker, will be allowed until the 30-minute time period transpires. All speakers are asked to give their full name, spell their last name, and provide their address. Speakers may not use the names of students during the public comment. Is anyone who would like to speak, please?
Deborah Larusso. It's L.A.R.U.S.S.O. I live at 71 Hudson Drive, right over in Lindy Lake. Just to add what Debbie was saying, I'm one of the remaining board members. There's like three of us now, so unfortunately, it is going to dissolve. We even tried to hold a meet and greet, which they came and greeted, but they never came back. So unfortunately, we're in a position where there's, it's going to have to be folded. We had discussed the last few remaining board members, and then that's how we emailed Debbie, is we have some of, somewhere around the $6,000 mark. So we want to have, because Jack Kobby's still on the account. I can't write a check. So we have to get him to write a check and close the bank account, send it to the Board of Education, and we all agreed that we would like to see that money divided up amongst all of our schools. I mean, even if it ends up being $200 a school, it's something. We don't think it should all go to one place. We think all of our faculty and all of our staff and all of our schools should get some piece of that money. So that was just, because I was at the meeting, so that's, I just wanted to fill you in to piggyback what Debbie said. But we do want to disperse the money throughout the district.
Could you reach out to Mrs. Francisco and maybe you could have a conversation?
Yeah, sure. Absolutely.
You know, and then we could maybe have a report by the time we get to the December meeting.
Yeah, no.
About how everybody is.
Not a problem, but right now it's sitting in a bank account in Lakeland doing nothing. So that's, you know, we're kind of want to see the schools get it. But yeah, I'll get in touch with Mrs. Francisco.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Did you want to speak on the Wallace property? Because Mr. Drew...
Yeah, you're invited to come up. Welcome aboard.
Hi, Dave Ofshinsky, O.F.S.H.I.N.S.K.Y. Soon to be joining you, 47 Morris Avenue. I'm no longer with the Wallace group. My term ended in April. Couple of thoughts for everybody. Number one, the new organization having some organizational growing pains. I think you'd want to know where they stand right now with getting board members, having board members elections, doing fundraising. There were some issues with the board itself. Another kind of big issue with the town and the Board of Ed and the group is when they look... looked at the first kind of agreement indemnification. Friends of Wallace doesn't have the money for insurance, is that up to you guys if something bad happens? If something bad happens up to the town, they have an event, God forbid a child is touched inappropriate, you know, that's a big issue, that was kind of a stumbling block that needs to be addressed. Other than that, that's pretty much it, and I look forward to joining you in January.
Thanks, thank you for helping out, thank you. Would anybody else like to speak?
Kate Romeo, 1 Christel Drive, Oak Ridge. It's hard for me to sit on this side and not speak, so I just want to say I'm really excited, but I want to just mention about the HIB stuff, it's nice to see everybody agree that there's miscommunication, and everybody agreed on that. What's the hard part is what to do about it. So as a parent, my third grader doesn't know anything about that law. He knows the word bullying, he knows, but he doesn't understand the discrimination part. And so maybe during the Week of Respect, we can do presentations in all our schools for all grades and explain that. You're not recreating the wheel, we're not going to do new things. This was an unfunded mandate from a former governor, and every school in New Jersey has to deal with it. So let's find out who's doing it best, you know? Dr. Anamon can ask his group, the principals can ask their groups, I bet there's presentations out there for every grade level already. You know, adding the statement, those are all great ideas, but if you're telling that to a parent when they get here, we've already not done a great job. So we need to start way before that, you know, and educating everyone. And I love the ideas of on the website, I talked about possibly a parent night where we can explain, like, what kind of investigation happens, like, people hear that word and it freaks them out, you know? So like, just explaining, communicating to kindergarten all the way up to parents, and putting those things in place, then that statement and those types of things are not needed on your back to cover you because you, we have to do it like a full rounded thing, and I just want to say that it's something that, you know, as a community, we can do better, everyone, it's not you, and it's sad that any parent would think that that is on the nine of you because it's not, it's a state thing, and I just wanted to mention that, that there's a lot of things to do, not just a statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak?
Seeing none, like to close public comments.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we need a motion. Mary, you want to make a motion for a specific question? Thank you. At 9:07 PM, I vote, I vote, I ask that we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel appointments, resignations, current litigation matters, special education matters, HIBs, and matters of attorney-client privilege. The executive session minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege or confidentiality is no longer applicable.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We will be coming back in, and we promise we'll be back.
Do you have a Robert rule?